Okay, it is 5:00 P.M. and I would like to call the Monday, August 8th, 2022, regular monthly board meeting to order. Welcome everybody that are here and those people that are digital. Roll call please instead of Ms. Peck.
Right, I can do this. I can do this. Joanna Reyes?
Here.
Lee Webster?
Here.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Here.
Karen Vandenberg?
Here.
John Creature?
Here.
Lance Trollope?
Here.
Jim Boucher?
Here.
And with that, let's stand and take our allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. That is our mission statement. And with that, do we have any speakers? We do not. We have no speakers. With that, then I'll skip to the following. I can get rid of about a minute and a half of comments. My comments, that is. So, item six, the consent agenda. And before I go to the consent agenda, I want to thank a couple of donors, several donors, Marathon County Sheriff's Department, Workplace Fundir Council, Mackless, and Kathy and Michael Olson. Thank them for their donating to our district. I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for the donations and to the district. Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Oh, don't forget your mics, everybody. We've been away for a month, so.
Thank you very much for bringing us up to speed again. I appreciate that. We have a first presentation for item seven, and that will be a presentation by Dr. Phelps and Dr. Galligan. They will share an update on the middle school schedule and standards-based grading. Thank you for being here, gentlemen.
Could you mind if we did a quick recognition of our newest doctor? Dr. Patrick Galligan completed this spring, correct?
Yes.
Congratulations.
You know, when I saw that, I got to say this, when I saw that, I thought, was he a doctor last year? And so, congratulations specifically.
Thank you very much. So, Dr. Phelps and I are here to talk a little bit about a couple of things that were happening at the middle school. I'm going to go first. Mine's going to be a little bit shorter. Dr. Phelps, he, I think, skipped out of the last meeting that we were at together, so he's going to go a little bit longer to make up for that as far as that goes because he had some softball commitments that he had to go to. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the middle school schedule because since I have come to John Muir, it's been a topic of discussion. In all honesty, one of my, during the first year, we had a faculty meeting that Dr. Hiltz came to, and it was quite the topic that day, and got a lot of questions on it. And both Dr. Phelps and I have talked with staff, talked with students about what our schedule does for us right now, what it could be if we decided to look at some different changes. So, that laid the basis for some questions that we asked through some surveys, both by the Wausau School District and also with the help of the folks over at WHIPS, to lay some groundwork for us to have a decent discussion about what our schedule accomplishes right now. And also, again, the potential for how we can do things different. I think we always want to look at the idea of are we doing the best thing that we can for students, and can we do something better? And so, we had some debates about that. We also surveyed our two faculties in May last year, and in May, we heard a pretty strong interest in at least addressing or looking at the possibility of a different schedule model, or maybe several different scheduling models because, as you guys know, there's not always one idea that always starts the process. So, that's the why behind why we're here, really. And I know that we've addressed this middle school schedule even two years ago, I think there was a word, presentation about the effects of the middle school schedule because it had been six years since that had been introduced, if I remember correctly. At that time, I was just taking over at John Muir, so my predecessor ran that with Dr. Phelps that day. But we felt like this is a worthwhile discussion. And if you, go ahead to the next slide, some of the things we've been learning about, some of the parts of that discussion have been, what is the ideal class length for students? Right now, we often operate in blocks for many of our core classes. Eighty-four minutes can be a long time. When you throw into that some of the changes in education that have happened over the last couple of years because of the pandemic and because of the ways we've been doing business, we might want to reassess whether or not that's the ideal class length. Or also going along with that, do we need to have, should we have, math and English taking over twice as much time for our students? They get eighty-four minutes every day, whereas science and social studies classes are eighty-four minutes every other day in our current scheduling model. Another question that's brought up on the slide is, are allied classes our elective courses? Should they be truly electives? Or should we have a certain sequence of classes, especially at the sixth grade and seventh grade level, more of an exploratory kind of model? And then in eighth grade, start to allow more choice? That kind of blends into the high school where they would have more choice as well. And then finally, again, kind of going back to that first question of ideal class length, student and staff classroom experiences. What is the best experience for our staff and students? Both of those are important questions that we felt we needed to address in this process. So, if you look at the third slide in my section, you'll get to kind of what we've done so far. After that staff survey that we got the results of in May and revealed to our staffs on May 27th during the collective staff meeting that we had during the last in-service day, we asked for volunteers to look at possible scheduling questions, possible scheduling models. And we had over a dozen people who volunteered to be part of that this summer. We had, as part of the process, some summer curriculum money set aside for that committee, and those folks came in for eight hours of meetings over three different days, two, three-hour sessions, and then we followed up with a final two-hour session, and came up with four different potential models to look at that do different things than what our current model does. We felt like, okay, we have that model, we could stand pat, and there's some people who would say that that's the right thing to do. So, it's not a continuum of everybody saying, hey, we have to get rid of the old schedule. There's plenty of people who think what we do right now is a solid model. But for other models, sometimes offering more allied time, sometimes changing the amount of time we have for classes, we can get you more details on all that. I didn't want to do that right now. I figured we'd give you the shorter version. Because the other part of the equation, if you go to the last slide on this one, is we're not sure that that's what you want us to do right now. And we wanted to kind of seek some guidance and find out from you what we should do in a potential next step. So, what we've done right now is we've got our committee together. They gave us four different models that we could potentially explore with our staffs more completely. We could present to our two middle school staffs, say, here's what some work was done this summer. What do you think of this? We could have our department leaders, team leaders, and others get involved in the discussion. We would then bring it to the district office to talk about viability of this in terms of costs, in terms of staffing, hiring process, all those kind of things. And if there was consensus then around a new model, that's when we'd engage you guys again, and at that point, probably engage our families. We haven't done that yet because, in all honesty, we didn't know that this is something we wanted to worry them about quite yet. We wanted to see where we were at and see if we could build some more consensus before we got anybody up in arms about something that we may never do, in all honesty. So, that's what we wanted to kind of talk with you guys about tonight. And then I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Phelps to talk about a different proposal and different kind of tract.
I just wonder if this might not be a good place to pause and see if there are questions about the schedule or the process?
Do you have any data to support the desire to change?
We do. So, not only that survey data that I talked about with staff, but also we looked at the previous studies done by WHIPS and others, talked about the effectiveness of the current scheduling model in terms of math and English scores, in terms of some of those other things. And I think part of what we intended to do later maybe was to show you some of those details and talk a little bit more about that in depth. We can certainly do.
Because if I recall back when this moved, I think it was Larry Mansell, Robin Yu came and showed, I recall some data that said, hey, this is the way to go because you're going to get better at what you spend time on. We knew math and English was a kind of a sore spot for us, and it'd be interesting to see the trends in grades, to see the results, all of that.
And we can certainly do that. What we, to give you the big picture, when we looked at this from some data that WHIPS in particular gave us, you can interpret it in a couple of different ways. There's some data that absolutely says this is good for kids, there's a real benefit to this, and then there's some longitudinal data that would say, well, maybe there's also some costs, some other things that they're missing because we're spending this time in these areas. And so, I think it'd be open to debate a little bit about kind of the rewards and benefits that we see.
And the WHIPS data that you're referring to, that's our specific data that they reviewed?
Right.
Yes.
I can jump in to clarify. There are two different WHIPS studies. The one that was very specific to the schedule started with a detailed quantitative analysis. One of the researchers out of UW-O'Clare, who's affiliated with WHIPS, looked at our achievement data for two different cohorts, before the current cohort, or before the current scheduled cohort, and then under the current schedule, and looked at not just the achievement very middle school, but also the achievement of those students in their freshman and sophomore years of high school. Because we wanted to see with math and ELA in particular, was there enough improvement to justify the double time? Because obviously, as you said, if you're spending more time on something, you should do better, but wasn't enough to justify, and then wasn't sustained beyond the middle school years. And then the other study that ended up being a really helpful parallel is the one that you've all seen quite a bit about the WHIPS study where we talked to our students and families and employers and community partners about how well are we preparing students for life after high school? And that raised questions related to the schedule. A lot of people saying that the students were making those important decisions about life after high school pathways when they were in that seventh and eighth grade year. And if doing something like, say, a double math or a double ELA limits what they're exposed to or limits their options, there could be costs there that we couldn't see in the quantitative study. So, those are things that we looked at, plus our own staff's interest to even start this process of saying, maybe there's more to work.
And I would just add, we did share the quantitative study with the board. I'll send that out again so you have that data.
How does that, how does the study of before and after account for pandemic loss? It seems like it's a, that's going to be a tricky one to try to compare before and after when the after is so impacted by virtual learning.
I believe they took a data set that was not affected by pandemic.
Yeah, we did two cohorts, sixth, seventh, eighth, pre-schedule change, and a sixth, seventh, eighth cohort post-schedule change but pre-pandemic.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I see that there's a dozen, more than a dozen current teachers that are willing to explore it. Were there teachers that were kind of iffy about exploring the new schedule?
Well, these particular teachers, we presented to an entire faculty. We shared the meeting together, so all of our staffs were there. These particular, I said, if you're interested in exploring this more, please send me an email, and these were the folks that spoke up right away and got people involved. As I said, there are some people who are very satisfied with our, with our schedule as is, and when you look at some of the data, there is a certain amount, because we ask questions like, what's the ideal time for a class? There's a certain percentage that say eighty minutes of math and English is what we should be doing. And then there's a bigger percentage that say sixty minutes is probably a better time all the way across. And so, that's why we're making some of these discussions is because we based it on some of the data that we looked at from our staff to say, do we want to have a discussion on it? So, absolutely, there's not a consensus that we should change. There's a debate and a discussion, and that's kind of where we're at now. We'd have to take it back to our staffs and talk more in depth about some of these things.
I think it's important to understand that there are more than twelve middle school staff members who are interested in the exploration. Twelve were able to commit eight hours this summer with the dates that we offered, and that was the amount of money we had to pay. We could pay twelve people for that. So, please, please don't walk away thinking of all the middle school teachers, only twelve wanted to explore this. That's not accurate. It was a small group that collected.
Yes. And I'll also add, when we implemented the current middle school schedule, the idea was after five years to review that process. That end of the five years happened right in the middle of the pandemic, and we did do a board update at that time, but our focus, many focus around our communities, our community and our teachers, was on pandemic.
Thank you.
I'm sensing that's what the board would like to hear, that we're at the beginning of all of this and not at the tail end of this. And so, we have a good understanding of what's going on, and it will be interesting to see what kind of data you find pertaining to the eighty-minute versus sixty-minute mandate or whatever you want to call it. It'll be interesting what's going to be the best. So, nothing else? Continue.
One more?
Go ahead.
I don't want to, like, the process was really well explained. My only question is really, you said potential next steps. You've maybe developed potentially four models that would be further investigated, and I'm sure you don't want to like elaborate on all of those. Are you able to give just like in a nutshell, these are what those four models would be? Because it's hard to know, oh, this is a great change. We have no idea what it's changing.
A couple of examples might be, we currently offer two allied periods. One or two of the models, I think that was approved by the committee, said, hey, let's look at three allied periods. Now, obviously, that means shorter class periods for some of those times and give and take with any of these choices, but that might be one of the choices. What we do for our resource or extension learning time might be all scheduled at the same time at the end of the day. Help us in some regards potentially with some of the kids missing because they have to go to extracurricular events at the end of the day, and they're missing classes and other things. But there's scheduling difficulties that go with that and trade-offs that we have to envision. So, that's where we tried to come up with some different models that would give us strengths and weaknesses that we then could talk about with staff, with you folks, with parents, et cetera. Our big parameters can't change, obviously. The beginning of the day, the end of the day, they have to stay as is. We have to offer a certain amount of time for lunch, and we have to staff that lunch. So, there's a few things in there that make it difficult for us to kind of revamp the whole system, but within those models, we've got some different choices. So, allied choices being one would be probably one of the bigger ones.
I'll add, I'll add the core minutes, which you mentioned before, too. As Pat said, right now, our math and ELA have double the time of social studies and science. So, having less time in ELA and math, what that could add to our social studies and science and our allied periods.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
From a staff perspective, too, there were some things that staff is very consistent about in terms of the survey. Overwhelmingly, for example, they saw value in having a homeroom for students in all three grades. So, there are things like that that we learned and tested. Even if these other things changes or change, this should stay the same. We also asked staff questions about, you know, how important is it for you to have team planning time? Right now, our allied teachers typically are not part of that team planning time, but in some models, they could be. So, we asked teachers to weigh in on some of those things in terms of how we support them in supporting our kids.
Okay, before I move into standards-based grading, I will have to say that Dr. Galligan was wrong about one thing that he said. He said I had to leave early for softball. That was T-ball. T-ball season is now over. I'm coaching soccer with first graders, but that's on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we have some time. So, please make sure the record shows. Yes, the record shows. I also had to laugh as the board agenda says middle school rejuvenation. And what I'm going to talk about today is standards-based grading, but I also want to go into the history of standards-based grading within our middle schools because it's not something that just came up. So, I'm going to go back to about 2013 where both of our middle schools, and at that time, I was moving from teaching middle school at John Muir Middle School to administration at Horace Mann Middle School. And that was a time where we were engaged in discussion about what our assessment practices look like, certain things and conversations about not grading behaviors and not taking points off for tardies or for dressing for gym class, things such as formative or practice, and what percentage of the grade that should be compared to our summative approaches in our tests. Things like the zero and what a zero actually does to that grade point average or that percentage. And then also discussions about growth versus average when we come up with our grades. Also during the last time, I've been very proud of our middle schools for the work we've done with standards-based instruction, basically aligning our standards with what we teach. And also, along with that, our standards-based assessment and having those grade-level content assessments aligned to what's most important. At the same time, in the last ten, ten years, both schools have had standards-based grading committees. We've had a school visit to Pointe. We've had book studies about standards-based grading and conversations and more at each, at John Muir and Horace Mann. During the last ten years, we've had pilot programs, so our staff have come to us as administrators and before Dr. Galligan, saying, I want to try this in my classroom. So, we've had, our FIA at both buildings have had, have been standards-based grading for the last three or four years, where their approach, instruction, assessments, but then also reporting on their report card is standards-based. Sixth grade social studies at John Muir has been doing this for many years. What they do at the end is standards-based instruction assessment, but then they do convert that to a grade point average or to a percentage at the end. Many teachers, math teachers at both schools have had a standards-based approach for the past five or six years, again, very similar to social studies using that approach and then converting that to a percentage. Also, wanted to add, part of that history in the past five years has been role as administration bringing this forward and making the jump to standards-based grading. Back in 2017 and 18, under Tom Han as the Director of Secondary Education, we presented a plan to him, and at that point, we decided not to move forward and instead do some more research. That's where the school visit to Pointe happened, and then our standards-based grading committees at both schools continued. Prior to the pandemic, right before, Paul Weber was our Director of Secondary Instruction. We had a plan to start standards-based grading at both schools, and what we were going to do is start in sixth grade, you know, right from our elementary who currently do standard-based grading, start in sixth grade, move to seventh grade, and then eighth grade. And we had a plan. Pandemic happened. So, prior to last year, we got together as administration, middle school, and decided this is, this is where we want to move forward. We want to continue with that. At that time, we brought it to our staff, and the feedback initially was, let's give it a little more time. So, instead of going forward with sixth grade this year, and I'm kind of fast-forwarding on my presentation, we did make a plan to move forward with standards-based grading at our whole school, starting in 2023, '24. Before I go into more of that, I do want to go into the why, and there's three areas that we'll quickly go over. First one being feedback, definitely one of the most impactful strategies in education, giving that specific feedback. But not only that, that feedback throughout the process from beginning to end. And then also being transparent with our students, and that transparency really leading to that student ownership of learning. And that, that, when I'm asked why standards-based grading, the first thing I usually go to is to change that narrative to, I'm doing this because of a grade, right? A percentage, an A or a B, and now I'm doing this for learning. And that mindset also comes true with the leader in me concept. Just this morning, we were talking about leader in me in our administrative meeting today, and one of the things that Dr. Rousher brought up on the screen is, we want our students, we want to empower our students to lead their own learning. And that phrase aligns very well with that standards-based grading approach. Also, keeping it at the forefront of what we do, our academic achievement, stealing another leader in me phrase, we want to focus on our highest priorities, those priorities through instruction, which we already do, through assessment, which I mentioned, but now taking that to the next level of that's what we grade and that's what we report to our families, to our students. Next up gives a quick middle school example of what we're looking at going, going to, very similar to what you'll see at the elementary report card. Instead of English, ninety percent, A minus, giving our families, giving that communication very specific feedback in our, in our highest priority areas. So, this shows an example of English, you know, just some examples of I can analyze author's use of imagery and plot. I can develop vocabulary by acquiring new words through context clues, dictionary use and analysis, and I could go on and on, and there are many examples that we could show you. And the last one, which I kind of prefaced before, what we've done this last year is, after developing the idea that we want to move forward with this as a school, as an administration team, we met with all of our grade-level departments on every Thursday of the second semester. What we did during that time is we went over, continued that why and some of the history of standards-based grading and the history. We showed them the roadmap that you'll see, and we took this from Winnicott, which is one of the school districts that has very successfully implemented standards-based grading. And you'll see in that roadmap, steps one, two, and three talk about prioritizing the standards, learning targets, assessment, those things that I talked about with instruction and assessment. What we want to do ongoing in the bottom right-hand corner was not only educate our staff, but make sure they're ready. Steps four and five, which we do get a lot of questions about, educating our students and community, you know, getting our family feedback, that's what this year is about. So, we plan on presenting to our families, getting our family's voice in this process, what that might look like all throughout the 2022, '23 school year. We had staff surveys. We've developed a rubric. We've continued professional development following this roadmap. This following year, we plan to continue our professional learning, behind-the-scenes implement standards-based grading, but then still convert that to a percentage. And then, like I said, that family engagement and feedback, where, as I said before, our plan is to move forward in the 2023, '24 school year with full implementation at both schools. With that said, we'll open it up to questions, except we do have time.
Anything on this side? Kind of go around here.
I've got a.
Go ahead.
Few of them. Start. So, I'm trying to do this in some logical order. My first comment, and again, I, since this came out on the agenda, I've been trying to educate myself on it and reading some articles and what have you. You mentioned, Rob, about not including zeros, tardy, behavior, not dressing for gym. Isn't there a school of thought that says we should be taking those things into consideration because it goes to exactly what you said, having the student take responsibility and accountability for the full picture?
Yes, and I would agree. And part of the standards-based grading approach is that we would report those separately from academic achievement. Both schools have been working, and we just actually met last week about this, about our citizenship rubric. So, how are you doing in those soft skills? So, every area that we described, you know, social studies, science, math, FIA, would still give a grade in those citizenship areas, but that would not impact specifically where you are in that learning target.
So, as a student or a parent, you would, if you think of it as a, as a grade, or you would get, or a feedback, you would get information, here's how you're doing in these skills in English, or these skills in math, and these skills in music, and here's how you're doing in these other skills that we value overall. But they'd be reported separately versus just if you see a grade for English and you don't know, is that because you are able to read and interpret really well, or is it because you have a great work ethic? Or, you know, what is it? It'll separate it out so the feedback student gets and the feedback family gets is really kind of free on all of those things.
But doesn't that happen today to the student from a teacher? I'm trying to understand how this changes the dynamic between teacher and student.
Some of the practices that you're, you're asking about have already been removed from our grading practices already. We don't think that we should be grading, and I don't think we can grade based upon attendance necessarily. We need to grade upon what is done academically in the classroom and those kind of things. Same thing with, you know, some of the other soft skills that you mentioned. We do have a rubric where we can talk about some of these, as we call it, citizenship approach of effort and how much they've been working and their attitude in class and some of those kind of things. So, parents do get some feedback on that, and you can have the range of you could do really well academically but not putting forth effort as much as we think you could, or some of the other skills that probably will pay off for you in the future, and just the opposite. You could have a really great effort, great, but right now academically, you're still struggling with some of these skills, and we need to improve on that, and we feel like that also gives that insight a little bit better, so.
Okay. I'm just, I've got a more questions. Okay, I'm, I'm still, I've got a, more questions on that, but I'll wait for more info. So is this the model, or is the model that you guys would propose, is this the one that would include retakes of tests in standards-based grading? Like you have, if you don't get it the first time, you can go back and redo it?
Seventy percent is generally what we kind of offer at that level right now. If you're under seventy percent, you do have an opportunity to retake. But there's usually some practices in, involved in that as well, where they have to show some effort and show some work on trying to build skills before they can just retake the test again, and some of those kind of things. And I think you could still have that approach in some of the standards-based approach. I'll, I'll let you.
I think the big thing that you talked about is the student's involvement in that process. It truly isn't just going to take another test. Proving that you're ready for it, having that conversation with the teacher about areas that you'd like to improve, and here's what I focused on. I think that's a big part of that feedback process that we talked about.
Because one of the concerns that I read that comes out of this is that students will not try hard, prepare themselves for the first time, because they know that they've got the rest of this additional resources or help coming afterwards, so I'm just going to see how I do. I, I don't know if you have any thoughts on?
If, if that's the concern, that would be the same concern that we would have in the approach that we're using right now.
So they can still retake unlimited tests today?
Well, I don't know about unlimited, and I don't think it would be fair to say that they could just retake it. Like we said, they have to do some work in the process to show that they're ready for an, an actual model. And, and I think that we have teachers and ourselves, even as administrators, would probably have a conversation with any student who literally is walking in and just taking the test to take it, and then always knowing that it's going to be a retake. We'd have counselors involved, we'd have other things about, discussions about success for the future and how that works.
Because where, where this train of thought was going is that it doesn't really align, that, that thought process doesn't really align with real world, in that, you know, you don't get X number of chances to do good, to get an acceptable grade in the real world, like you should prepare, you should study, you should be ready, and your result is your result. And then you have to live with that and then do better the next time. And oh, by the way, isn't this all, isn't your grade based solely on the, the summative, on the tests?
Which is what we're doing right now.
Still, there's no consideration for homework, completion, timeliness, all the other stuff?
I don't think, I don't think that's how I would characterize it, but I think
So, but if it's tests only, then it's not homework? Like what goes into a grade today, and then what would go into it in this model?
I think one of the things that we're talking about is student motivation, right? Having our motivate, students motivated to do homework, to, part of the process of learning. And what, you know, I mentioned that leader in me phrase, that empowers students to lead their own learning. And we believe in what our school districts have seen, many school districts, with standards-based grading approach, having students involved more in that process and making that, that feedback more transparent, that builds those lifetime learners, where it's not about just getting points. It's about learning, and it's about these specific areas that we're learning.
Another issue was that it became more time-consuming for staff because of the retakes. And you've got kids at, all over the spectrum suddenly in one section or in one course. How, how would you deal with that from a staff? Because one thing we hear is there's not enough time today. So having them do retakes and having to re-educate and retrain on all these other things when you have part of the class way up here, how do you manage that in this model?
Yeah, and we heard our staff early on, and that's why we moved it back a year. You know, as I mentioned before, we were looking at starting sixth grade as early as this year, but we thought the professional development that we did last year and will continue this year, along with our implementation of Canvas and our new learning management system. I think all of those play a part in that time management process. What we've heard from many who are doing standards-based grading is this has helped in differentiation and figuring out who in the classroom needs help where in that learning process. And I believe that too, as, as a teacher who taught for ten years and started some of these assessment practices as a seventh-grade math teacher, that there are benefits to, to really drilling down to what every kid needs. And standards-based grading in my eyes helps us.
To, to Mr. McKee's question, we, we currently allow retakes, correct? So the staff are already managing that practice in terms of time? Okay.
That would not change substantially, I don't think, based upon moving to standards-based grading. It's allowed, we do that.
And a lot of this, I, I know you guys have brought back to leader in me, but just for clarification, leader in me is like a behavioral system, right? Not a, and it's not an educated, education curriculum-based system?
Empowering students, student leadership.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure, I thought I was missing. Part of, part of Covey. And then Winnicott did this successfully, based on what? Like what, what data do they have to share?
Their forward test scores went up dramatically. They became one of the top-rated states, or schools in the middle school level. I can get you that data if you'd like to see it. It was part of our education. Mr. Nickle and I both went through a six-session course last fall. Because I, having come to the middle school, had not dealt with this as much, so I needed to educate myself a little bit more because of my background at the high school level. So, so I can get you some of those details, but it was, it was pretty dramatic in terms of their movement and their forward testing scores.
And sustained. They've, they've been doing it long enough that it wasn't a flash, it wasn't a one-time. In my previous district, Winnicott was in our conference, they do really well. They, they do a lot of work, and they, they're willing to help us also.
Okay, and then I guess my, my only other question that I had was, so we're not proposing, or you're not even proposing anything that would change for high school?
No.
So a student would then go from eighth grade in the one through five or one through four model, then they transition to high school, and it goes back to A, B, C, D, F?
One of the conversations, it, it comes up in every conversation we have, is what does that eighth-grade year look like to prepare to go to a A-through-F scale? Is that a conversion? We're still, still thinking, one of our survey questions was specifically about conversion back to a percentage. And our eighth-grade staff felt strongly, or it was about fifty-fifty, that they would like to convert back to that percentage because of that reason for that. And, and what, what is a grade compared to what you've seen K-through-eight, or K-through-seven?
Okay, and then what, what is the student feedback then on this proposal?
We haven't engaged in a survey at this time, because that's part of kind of the roadmap that we were following, used by these others. So that was part of our process for this year, is to take this out more to board two parents, two students, and talk a little bit more about that.
So right now, you're planning full implementation, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Next year, twenty-four. And our students have lived this K-through-five. They're living it in FIA, FIA class right now, they're living it in many classes too.
If I could also go back to your previous question, having been at the high school for a very long time, and taught for fifteen years at Wausau West, and then as part of the administration, there is a transition that happens in ninth grade, and it is very dramatic. Whether we use A, B, C, D, whether we use three, two, one, zero, there's a whole learning curve for freshmen that they're going to have to adjust. I would say that that is only one piece and can be overdone. They'll learn high school because they have to learn high school, but it's a, it's a, it's a change. It's a transformation in many different ways. This would be one piece of that puzzle. I, I think that, I think we need to kind of keep it in that context, because there's a lot of learning that takes place that first semester for freshmen, so.
Okay, well, it, yeah, I guess it would be, it's a little concerning to hear that we're already planning twenty-three, twenty-four, full implementation, and we haven't talked to kids yet, or families, parents, I mean, whomever. I understand that's on the docket, but to me, that should become a decision point, not just a box that you're going to check, and we're still going to move forward with this. So, for what it's worth.
Other questions? Lance, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I've got a few, a few, like, concerns, I guess. And I've been thinking about this for days, and you've been thinking about it for years, so none of these will be a surprise to you. I'm sure you've thought a lot about them. One was the transition year that you just spoke about. That one popped to my, mind right away, that it's not that the GPA in middle school doesn't matter, but it doesn't impact you long-term as much as it does in high school. So to get to that freshman year, and then suddenly, wait, I, I missed an assignment? That actually hurts my final grade, right? And study for this quiz, and that actually hurts my final grade. Whereas in middle school, if I didn't study for that quiz, I could still show my progress. And I think that is more the transition that I would be concerned with than the, whether you call it a three or call it an A, that part doesn't matter as much. My concern would be more like, you know, all of a sudden you hit a class where if you miss assignments or, or do poorly on a quiz, it, that hurts your grade for the whole semester.
If I could address that?
Yes, definitely.
So my wife teaches freshman English and teaches a lot of kids, and there is that learning curve that happens. And we could talk about it, I think, for a very long time in eighth grade, and it's not a reality until they hit that freshman year, until they start to see their grade change and start to be impacted by that. So I don't know that we can have, I, I don't know that the effects of us, unless we make GPA count at the eighth-grade level, which I'm not proposing, but the, the, unless that, that's when the learning would start. And that learning also starts when freshmen start to see that, oh, my grade is being impacted, and we go to parent-teachers conferences, and they have to learn that through that way. We're dealing with young adults, they have to see consequences, real-life situations, and they have to live through some of those things. So we can prepare them, and we do prepare them in many different ways, I think, at the middle school level for high school. But I think there's still learning that has to take place once they arrive at that. And, and there probably will never be a perfect solution as far as that goes.
And the other piece that comes up, we go back to some of the why that Dr. Phelps was talking about. You know, the goal is to help kids become more skillful learners, to really understand what it is they need to keep doing, start doing, stop doing in order to learn, not in order to get a certain grade, but in order to really learn. And if they develop those skills as learners, then when they transition into different models during high school, and then hopefully they keep learning beyond high school, they can take those learning skills they've used and be successful in different models we throw at them, or others throw at them. And as you pointed out, there's a lot more flexibility within the elementary and the middle school, a lot lower stakes in terms of trying to find the best ways to help kids develop some of these learning skills. It does become more high-stakes in the current high school model, when you're looking at things like GPA and transcripts, and post-secondary scholarships, and admissions, and all these other pieces. So elementary and middle school are ideal times to really help them learn how to learn, and then in high school, we can help them adapt, so that they can be successful beyond us.
The second issue or concern is I often hear from elementary teachers that our curriculum doesn't align with the standards-based grading for quite a while. And then eventually, it does, and then we change the curriculum, and then it doesn't. And then it takes a couple of years to get the, the report card to line up with what they're actually teaching in the curriculum. And then when it lines up, then we change the curriculum again. So that would, just, just an issue. It's, it's something that, it sounds really good when it all lines up, but it often doesn't if anything changes. That's just an issue I often hear from elementary. So we would probably start hearing that in middle school as well if that happened. The other thing is, I think Pat brought up in terms of time. Like right now, I think elementary teachers, for doing the standards-based report cards, we give them an afternoon, which isn't enough. They also work nights and weekends to do that, and that's when they have like twenty students. And if, having kids that have gone through elementary school, I know that the encore report card notes and grades look different than the classroom teacher does. It's much more generalized, it's much more box-checking and not as individualized. And that is not a criticism of the encore teachers, it's just a reality of they, they just can't do for a hundred students what the classroom teacher can do for twenty. So a concern that I would have with this is that we would need a lot more time for prep and planning time, I think, for our teachers to be able to actually create the report card, like the example that we have, and actually have it individualized for each student. If we didn't have all that extra time, I think it would revert back to just sort of generalized. It seems like this is about a three and a two, and, and again, I'm not, I, I don't mean to criticize teachers. It's just that if you, if you have a hundred students versus having twenty, I, I should ask, what, what would be the average number of students that a math teacher or an English teacher would have in a middle school?
It would also depend on the schedule.
Right.
Part of, part of all, how, all this is complex, so.
Yeah, so that, that would be a concern, because the, the, we had that slide where it showed the A versus the standards-based, because you could do all of that stuff on a standards-based with that A as well. If we, if you required the teachers to do it, they could do it right now, if you gave them enough time and reduced their class load enough that they had a low number of students, so they could actually individually know this for every single student and have the time to have those meetings with the student and do all that. I think that all sounds great, but I just think it takes a lot more than just changing what, what we call it. I think we'd have to provide not just professional development, but also just way more time than what they have now. And people don't like when we say things cost money, but time costs money because it means hiring additional staff. That's, that's what time means in, in our system. And I don't know what your thoughts are on that. I know that you said before, they're doing some of this already, of course, that, I don't want anybody to think that they're not already having conversations with students, and of course they are. But that standards-based grading takes a lot of time.
Yeah, and I think that one of the things that we felt it was really important, and what we heard from staff early on when making these decisions, is moving it back a year. During that professional development time last year, when we met with our departments, many of our departments were already developing, what might this look like? So that they can do that behind-the-scenes work this year to get used to it, because it is a different type of grading. And like you said, we hope that every staff member is having those conversations with students, but it, but it is a shift. So I go back to one thing I said, we met with ELA teacher in a previous district who did standards-based grading, and year one was, was kind of tough, right, to that shift. But then she wouldn't go back. And once she did it, the specific feedback and how that changed her classroom was important to her.
Yeah, okay.
So I think year one, it will be a shift, and that's one of the reasons we did that behind the scenes this year.
Well, that, that's good to hear, because I was more worried about year five or year ten, where it's like, I just can't do this anymore. This is, because I, I talked about the alignment with the, with the report card and the transition year. Those are things that you guys have thought of and, and can address. And, but that, that time for the staff is the one, to me, that sounds like it would be a big hurdle, because if it isn't provided, I think the standards-based report card won't actually create anything different than what they're already doing right now. It'll just, it'll have to just be a general thing. They just won't have enough time to do it a different way.
Right, and, and that was exactly my, my concern before. I mean, pushing this back a year to give them, I think you just said, time to get used to it? How, how does that create more time or fundamentally shift what they're doing, so they don't get overwhelmed that first year?
Well, one of the, one of the pieces that works really well with this adjusted timeline, and I give credit to Rob and to Patrick for really listening to their staff and, and being responsive to what they shared as they're trying to learn, they didn't say tough things, just going forward, they said, oh, okay, we hear you. Yes, we will slow it down. And one of the advantages is now it aligns with our transition to Canvas as a learning management system. And Canvas, compared to its learning, is much more teacher and student and family-friendly, and it's really designed to be very much more intuitive with standards-based grading. And with the Thursday meetings that Pat and Rob described, we had our tech integrationists sit in on many of those and talk about, yes, this is a concern, and here's how, as you learn Canvas, it will make your life easier. It'll make it easier to give kids this feedback directly. It'll make it easier to go from the feedback you're giving while you're grading to an actual report card. So it, it doesn't add time, but it will add support. It's a better tool that hopefully will make that work less cumbersome.
Because I, I had, and Rob, I know you, you shared yours, you know, with, with the one individual who said, this is great, right? I mean, it's a sample size of one. I think I had four teachers reach out to me saying, this is a nightmare. So four versus one, I'm not saying one is more credible than the other. I'm just saying, it, it appears to me that there's still quite a bit of angst, at least among the staff. Not to, not to mention, we haven't even gotten to the students and/or parents yet.
And I would agree, there's some hesitation from some of our staff members. But to other staff members, many of our staff members, that's where this push came from, is from our teaching staff and wanting to try out the pilot programs and continuing pilot programs. And what we found in these meetings, there are a lot of staff who, who agree with standards-based grading as well.
Ms. Nannen?
They've actually asked most of the questions that I was going to ask, so I don't need to go back there. But one question I have is specifically, you know, in looking at your why, I see that, you know, the theory behind it is there seems to be a better understanding your why, I see that, you know, the theory behind it is there seems to be a better understanding of what the students really have achieved and learned versus, you know, here's a grade that just kind of incorporates everything. And so, that's kind of a benefit of this standards-based grading that seems obvious as to why that's a benefit. My question is, how is it that it sounded like Winnicottany then had greater outcomes once they've shifted on their forward testing? Because to me, a big change that's disruptive for staff and everyone in the midst of it, you want to make sure it's worth it for student outcomes because that's why we're here, right? And we want them to do better. So, why, what is the shift, what is the shift that seems to make it more successful for kids to have greater achievement? Is it because teachers have a better breakdown of where they're struggling and where they are really succeeding? Or what is the theory behind why this works better for achievement? Because it sounds like Winnicottany at least is experiencing that. Do they have any ideas as to why that's better?
I'd refer to you first, I have my own thoughts.
I haven't specifically talked to Winnicottany. Pat and Mr. Adickel went through the six-week kind of professional development, but I go back to some of that why on that transparency of learning targets and including the students in that transparency, focusing on those highest priority areas. And this makes it, where students know what we want, what we want to learn and they're a part of the process the whole way through.
Sure.
If we focus on student engagement, I think that's what we're really about and I think we should be about that. One of the unofficial mottos that we have at John Muir is to give kids a great experience every day and that's what I want them to focus on. I think if we do that and we involve students, and that's going to be one of our goals at the building this year, is to involve students in that conversation. They take ownership of their learning far more than maybe just looking at, okay, check this box, check this box, got to get this thing done. I can speak from my own experience as a parent. If my daughter was not engaged in the classes she was in, she wasn't going to do the work, it didn't matter if she was going to get a B or not. And her grade point showed it in high school as far as that goes, but she learned a great deal and now as a college student has become very successful because she owns her own learning. She's only one example, but I think that when we engage in students in their own learning, it's a very powerful thing and we believe, and I think a lot of other people believe, that through this process, we'll engage more students at the middle school level, the way we would be grading, than maybe what we currently do, which is why we want to move in that process. Are there some holdouts? Are there some people who disagree with us? Absolutely. I think we very rarely find complete consensus on anything we do. I think you guys probably know that better than most of them as far as that goes. So, I, I think there are some questions and you guys have very legitimate questions and we'll try our best to answer them, but you know, there won't be a perfect process no matter what we choose to do. We, we believe that this is the right model to move forward with and it's better than maybe some of the things for students that weren't.
Any other questions?
I guess just one other, well, two maybe. The, on the summative portions of the exams, which are sort of what will play into these standard-based ratings, from what I understand, just in another district that I know is already using this, I'm wondering if this is what it will look like. As I understood it, there would be portions of the test that was like, if you get all of this done, it's like a three. And then if you move to this section and get this accomplished, it's a four. And if you get, you know, like you know on your test what it is you need to do, is that correct, in order to get to those numbers? Like, so your test comes back and you get a two, three, or four, or whatever, and you know on the sections that you need to kind of complete and succeed at in order to get those numbers? Because it's kind of like this is the next level of understanding. And what, so I'm first just wondering if that's how that works? If the summative exams are such that they're designed to sort of say, this is level one, this is level two, this is level three, this is level four, and if you kind of move through all of these, you have a four on the exam? My question is if that's what that looks like? And then secondarily, from the feedback that I've received is, there's some students, and I completely agree, we want to internally motivate and give them a desire to love learning. Some kids are just externally motivated always and it's always going to be about the grade or the cash or the whatever that comes, whether we try to get them internally motivated or not. But from the feedback I've learned is there's some students that say, I'm not even going to do that section, I'm satisfied with a three. Because they know what they need to do and they don't even continue with the rest of that. Is that, because I know nothing obviously about what this actually looks like practically speaking, is that the way those exams look?
The ones that I've seen, most of them don't say, like, question one, you complete this, you're at a one, question two, you're at a two. Many of them, you know, with that transparent learning, has the learning target right on there, that this is the learning target and then has a question and then within that question, that's where the levels take place. Many of those are through that, like a one, two, three scale and then that four being exceeding or advanced, however you want to say it. I think what you might be talking about is, I, I've seen math tests where this is grade level and then there is an extension problem at the end, which does give an opportunity in the test that I'm thinking about to reach that, you know, advanced level. And I have seen some students, you know, skip that.
Okay, I was just wondering.
I think the other piece is, you have to be careful not to assume that every summative assessment will be a traditional pen and paper type test. So, put it in the realm of writing, which could happen in any subject area, but I'm saying English teachers do a lot of teaching of writing. There would be a rubric that students would have at the beginning so they know what they're trying to achieve. But I think about me myself, as an, as an English teacher, students would give me an early draft or an early portion, give them feedback how to make it better. At no point would I say, gee, Jim, this is already really amazing and grade level, you can stop. This is really great, here's what you can do to get better, go try again. And the same thing for a student who maybe is struggling and isn't at grade level, this is solid, you've got this, here's what you need to do better, go try again. And it's not until it's really, they've gone all the way through that process and it's done, that then something would go in the grade book. And when you look at standards-based grading, often it's not just that one time of, if students write, say, a variety of times around those same skills, the early ones might not be weighted as much as the later assignments when it comes to really achieving it. So, I could be kind of bad at a skill at the beginning of first quarter, but if I figured it out by the end of first quarter, when the grade's going to go in, a standards-based grade would reflect what I really knew at the end of the instruction, not average what I knew at the beginning, middle, and the end.
Which was a huge benefit of that, of course.
The part of it's the approach, and so I just, I didn't want you to think it would always be a paper pad test. There's lots of different ways kids show us their, their learning and what they're able to do in a summative way.
Just, just for perspective, I just wanted to share that Winnicottany has three schools, 1,761 students, 14% economically disadvantaged, and a student-teacher ratio of 15 to 1. So, when comparing it, pardon?
Which is high.
15 to 1.
Ours is about eight or 10.
And they've implemented K-12. P-K-12.
Okay, any questions? I want to descend. How about over here?
I just have a comment. So, I have a, my son just graduated from, or went over to kindergarten and I am familiar with the, the testing that is, that you guys are trying to introduce and I can speak to, as a parent of a five-year-old, it helped my husband and I understand what were the skills that we had to work on with him and what were the skills that he was doing grade in. So, as a parent of a young child, that did help, but the class that he was in only had about 10, eight students. So, then I do worry about the teachers that have a large volume of students and how they're going to be able to get the grading done and not just check boxes off just to get it done because of their time. We all do, we already do ask a lot of the teachers, so my concern is of the teachers. And my question is, did we have this kind of grading before and then we moved away from this grading in middle, middle school? Or have we always had?
No, we, my 20 years in middle school in Wausau School District, we have not had standards-based grading across the board.
Okay, okay, that was just a question. Thank you.
Jim, if I make just one comment, I, I kind of share a lot of the same concerns and I just look at it from an outside perspective, the time that it might take to, you know, implement for the teachers to, to grade in this system, is there, are there things that you talked about earlier on in your presentation through schedules, some other avenues to improve grading and scoring? Additional feedback, obviously there are parent-teacher conferences and that's where I go to learn what my students are doing, both at the elementary and, and middle school level right now and I don't have yet in high school pretty soon. But I see this as an opportunity, middle school I look at as an opportunity to prepare for, for high school. And so, I'm, I'm just curious, rather than ripping a Band-Aid off and implementing something, obviously you guys have a lot more steps that you're talking about and getting additional feedback that might course correct or change your, what it is that you guys may or may not implement, but I guess I, I just share some of the same concerns and I guess I'm wondering, maybe in future discussions, how many districts in our state, you know, utilize this sort of grading system? You know, is it a large percentage or a small? Some of that statistical data for future meetings.
We don't have that number. I know early on we identified some school districts who had it. Like I mentioned, we did the school visit to Pointe, who's had this for many years. Winnicottany Oregon School District, there are some others.
Okay, yeah, no questions there, I just kind of wanted to.
I'll just make one comment to help us move along. This is a discussion that literally I had dealt with 10 years ago and these questions are very good questions because these are the questions you're going to continue to have asked and you need to be prepared to answer those questions because this is a small group here, the school board, representing a large group out there. And I think you need to be aware of the fact that standard-based grading is much different and sometimes is very difficult, as you're finding out for even your teachers and for the parents to figure out, okay, this is completely new. So, standard-based, I'm going to sit back and just listen to how you answer all these questions because I am very interested in what we do, but do it very methodically. That's a warning, very methodically go through this because it's, it affects students. And the other thing is, and I would say this for the secondary, I'd be very concerned about this at the high school level. Until colleges accept standard-based grading and eliminate a GPA, we're handcuffed to what our students are going to be preparing to do to go to the collegiate level. So, that's not a part of the discussion right now, that's a part of just middle school. So, I'll be very interested in hearing that. So, with that, if there's nothing else, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item, we're talking about agenda item eight, Whole Child, Whole Wausau Service Strand update. Ms. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much and good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to bring to you an update tonight on the service strand of the Whole Child, Whole Wausau Strategic Plan. I'm just thrilled to be here tonight because I'm going to share with you some updates that I firmly believe will be a game changer for the Wausau School District, both at when we look at enhancing the experience for our students, their families, and our staff in the community, but certainly from a marketing aspect, getting our name out there, reaching more potential students and staff at a time when it's certainly more important now than ever before. So, with that, I'll get started. Just as a reminder, there are three components to the service strand, so I'll go through each one briefly and walk you through where we are at. So, that first component is marketing and the goal is right there on your screen. It's about increasing awareness and positive perceptions of the district as measured by an annual increase of 5% in Facebook fans and followers and an annual increase of 5% in positive media stories. I am thrilled to tell you, we have exceeded both of those goals. And John, you can go ahead and switch to the next one. We saw a 7% increase in fans from the 2021 to 2122 school years. And what is really important to point out is our average monthly reach. So, for this last school year, we reached on average 35,491 people. What was really exciting to see is from January through March of this year, we reached an average of 46,800 and I, I know why that is and I'll talk about that in just a moment. In terms of the positive media stories, we saw 16% increase year to year, which is fantastic. And when I was before you last year, I had mentioned there was a pretty drastic increase in the number of negative media stories, so I wanted to update you where we are at. When I ran the data, we saw a 23% drop and there's a graph just to the right of that that kind of tells the story of where we were at for this school year. So, what do our next steps look like? And it's really going to be about continuing to grow our Facebook reach. And we can do that in a couple of ways, one being videos and doing our own news stories, as I like to call them. Just for some information and background, I had put together a little news story on the Green Bay Packers' visit to Wausau East from a few weeks ago. That video alone reached 7,600 people. If I look at posts that just have graphics or pictures, on average, on the high end, probably about 3,500 people we reached and on the low end, 1,000. So, that definitely speaks to the power that those videos have. Pictures and graphics are great, but certainly the more that we can capitalize on videos, the better. Utilizing the Facebook advertisement feature, that is why we saw such a jump in our reach in the first three months of this year. We had done a Facebook ad there and not only can we reach families within our area, we can expand beyond the state and quite frankly, even farther for less of a cost. TV advertising, radio advertising, thousands of dollars, for $20, we can reach probably the same, if not more, people. I'm not saying radio and TV advertising is not great, it has its place and we've utilized it before and I know we'll utilize it in the future, but that is very powerful just in terms of the data we have available. Because social media is where it's at, professional development is not hard to come by, so it's going to be a lot of capitalizing on that and learning where the algorithms are because that's very important. Positive media stories, continuing to push the positivity to the media. Part of that is encouraging all of our district staff. We have 20 schools, a lot of great things happening to share those with the communications department because certainly the more that we know about them can alert the media and then I certainly could be there to put together those district news stories. And when something is not published or there's not a story from the media, it's asking why? What was it about that? You know, it might be something as simple as staffing on their end or whatever else was happening in the news, but certainly the more that I can make sure that I get them what they need so that they're interested, that will only help us. And I have an example, I, I've mentioned these district news stories, just as a reminder for both the board and those watching at home, the main elementary students welcoming a classmate from Afghanistan, that is one, and that will be shared on our Facebook pages tomorrow as well to share with the, the public. So, the second component's going to be about programs and offerings and increasing awareness of district programs and offerings and optimizing experiences for students, families, staff, and the community as measured by a brief feedback tool with a baseline determined by June of 2020. When I was before you last year, I had mentioned that the pandemic kind of got in the way of that, but today I am happy to report that we have selected our tool and that tool is Qualtrics. And there are two components to Qualtrics, there's this business component and then education. And the education component was designed to improve the experience for students, staff, and families and that's exactly what we want to do and exactly what's in the goal. Through Qualtrics, we are able to implement everything from pulse checks, surveys of all kinds, we can do data processing and so, so much more. I'm learning that the sky is really the limit and there are new use cases being developed all the time. What else is really neat is that more and more K through 12 districts in Wisconsin are utilizing this tool in addition to universities. So, it really is giving us an opportunity to connect and network with those districts to learn how they're using the platform and, and how they've done certain surveys or certain projects. So, there's a lot of great opportunity there as well. And we have been using Qualtrics. There's just a couple of them mentioned here where we have put this into place, but the big takeaway is that spring of this year was really a test run of the platform, getting to learn it, get familiar with it. But the key takeaway is that the use of it is really going to amp up this fall, especially with those pulse checks. And then, next steps, professional development is going to be extremely huge. What is great about Qualtrics is that they do offer it at least on a quarterly basis, if not more than that. It's going to be about basis, if not more than that, it's going to be about reaching out to those Wisconsin districts that do utilize the platform, again, to see how they're using it, and then whatever use cases maybe we are interested in doing, having them kind of walk us through how they created that project, so for us, though, identifying how we use it, knowing the sky's the limit, there, there will be a lot of opportunity, not only this year, but going forward, and familiarizing our families and our staff with it as well, to increase participation rates, because it is new, so there's going to be a marketing component to that as well, and I'd be remiss if I did not mention, you know, when we look at enhancing the experience, we are about to launch a brand-new website mobile app, and this is really optimizing the experience and reaching families and staff where they are at, we do not have one right now, you would have to log into your web browser and type in our web address, so this, just with a click of a button, they can launch our, our app, it's customizable, so however parents and staff would, would like that app to look, they can set all that, but what's really neat is it can transform district communication, because we can send push alerts, whether it's a virtual learning day, or an individual school has an important message they need to get out, so this will be a game changer, and it'll save us some money too, because we use a lot of different platforms right now, each with their own costs, and if we can funnel it through one, that'll be a cost savings, so more information coming out about this, so watch for that, next steps will be learning to use the app, marketing the app, because we need our families and our staff to download it, so you'll see a big push there coming up, and certainly utilizing it to its full potential, lastly, the third component is partnerships, so attracting and strengthening partnerships, and optimizing their mutual value, as measured by a quantitative and qualitative feedback at the conclusion of the partnership, or at least on an annual basis, and when I was before you last year, similar to the second component, the pandemic got in the way of that, but Qualtrics will serve us quite well here, it's really the perfect use case, not only can we do pulse checks to check in with our partners, but we can put QR codes that link to surveys on posters, or in programs and brochures, again, really optimizing experiences for our partners as well, and we do want to continue to use Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Institute for Public Policy and Service, or WHIPS, because they've been extremely valuable, and there will be cases going forward where their help will be extremely value, valuable, so we wouldn't want to lose that, and I, I just want to mention, we do have a lot of partnerships that are going really well, and in fact, we heard from one of them earlier today in our admin team meeting, and that's the, the Boys and Girls Club, so we do have a lot of great partners that we're honored to work with, and then next steps will be implementing those surveys, and getting those QR codes to surveys on those posters and brochures, analyzing the data, and then reaching out to WHIPS on an as-needed basis, and with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Am I right, any questions, any comments?
I'll just make a comment, obviously, the feed, or the data that you're seeing, and positive trends and negative trends going down, that's good, I'm doing this in my own place of work, but a YouTube channel, I don't know if we utilize that a lot, but the Facebook and short clips and videos, you know, how, we're trying to work on a lot of how-tos, I don't know how many how-tos we'd have, you know, probably have some here in the, in the district, you know, why we love this school district, a lot of those short clips are very, very, very powerful, because people will watch it for about 30 seconds, and, you know, if they get some value out of it, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of good, positive information that you can get out there, so.
Those are, are great ideas, and I think that will speak to exactly what we're trying to do, get new students, so the more that we can hear from them about why they love the Wausa School District, and same with staff, right, like, why is this a good place to work will serve us quite well, and then if we can make that a Facebook advertisement, that can, can reach pretty far, so there's a lot of potential there.
At the high school level, if we have classes that kind of work in that field, technology, video editing, things of that nature, you know, that's, that's obviously a huge space, a huge industry, not just, you know, on TV, but online content, and being able to edit those videos, they could not only put stuff out for the district, but learn in the, in the process of, of doing that, so.
That's fantastic, a lot of opportunity there, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to agenda item number nine, share preliminary design plans for South Mountain, as referendum-funded improvement plans develop for each facility, the board will see updates when the designs reach 50% completion, current plans for South Mountain elementary, should we share it at this time, so, I pass it over to you, Ms. White.
Sure, I'll start, we have a couple of agenda items that are wrapped into the same PowerPoint presentation, and while we're getting that started with.
Sharon, would you like to share your screen?
Remotely today from Nexus, Russ Schumacher from Nexus is with us here in person, of course Larry Siler, so the first agenda item is our preliminary plans for South Mountain, and we're not ready to put this out to bid yet, so you won't take action on it, you've seen this type of presentation from us before, so I will turn it over to either Russ, Sharon, or a combination of the two, Sharon's going to be driving, so, and our microphone is on, so we're good there.
Can you hear us, Sharon?
Yes, I'm, I need a moment to fix the PowerPoint, give me a sec.
So again, you're going to see the South Mountain first, that's preliminary design, no action needed, and after that is done, we're going to see the Stetin one, that's the second time you've seen that one, and we are ready to go up to bid for that one, or real close, for 95%, so we'll ask for your approval for this Stetin item, and then the third item is kind of different, but related to the Hawthorne Hills road that we're building and the developer's agreement.
Are you having trouble with the presentation, maybe we can have John show it, and you can just have him forward it?
Yeah, I just had to get it to the beginning, thanks for your patience. All right, can everyone see that?
There we go.
Excellent, all right, so welcome, everybody, we're here for our third design meeting update on the referendum projects, so today we're going through with the 50% design review for South Mountain, and a 95% design review for Stetin, so with that, and then we'll have a moment to answer questions, you know, as we go through this, so, so here we go, so we have the referendum drawing shown, that was presented to the community as a reference, and so as we go through this, we have what we've been doing so far, sorry, I'm just getting everything, it's presenting a little bit, so if you don't mind a second, I think I should have this, so with that, we've worked closely with district staff, we've had four design meetings to date, three user group meetings, and the user groups consisted of the principal, maintenance, teachers, and the design team, with some district representation. So here's an updated site plan, the current design, you can see here that with the new additions, you can see those in orange, we have, the green represents the areas that we're going to be modifying within the site, and you can see that we needed to reroute the fire lane around the back of the building, and the other thing that became apparent during design was to be able to maintain this walking path throughout, and so it's running, it's part of the gym curriculum, to make sure that kids are timed for, is this, okay, is this better, I mean, can you see the whole slide now?
It's fine, yeah.
All right, so the kids in the community have a .2 mile loop that they train on, and we're able to maintain that, and that was important, so here we have some preliminary perspectives, the goal here was to tie the new additions, there's two of them, into the existing site, and so you can see that those are coming along nicely as well, so here on the overall floor plan, what we have is, you can see there's two additions, you see the one, you can see my cursor, okay, so you have the fourth and fifth grade addition up here, and then you have a kindergarten wing addition down below, what we also have shown in light purple is the front office renovation space, and some areas that you see in the darker purple are some of the ADA work, where we have cubbies, and, you know, some door hardware and things like that, that are included in the scope of work. So here we have the kindergarten wing, and you can see the two classrooms, if you look, you can see that we have two in-classroom toilet rooms, serving the little kids, we have some storage space for all the kindergarten supplies, and we were able to add IT work in here, and we did not need to provide new mechanical or support space to support this addition, so here we have the front office remodel, we do, we did add a couple extra doors to help secure the front space, there is some renovation work that's required to make this new arrangement work, but again, we're focusing on a better flow for security through the front office, so this here shows the fourth and fifth grade wing that we're adding on with the four classrooms, right here, you have two resource rooms that are shared amongst all the classrooms, this space is a flex room, that can be checked out for multiple purposes, and, you know, we got teacher input, principal input on how this space is designed and used, so it's very specific to the school, here we have two toilet rooms, boys and girls, serving the students in the new wing, we have included mechanical space, we need new air handling equipment to serve this end of the building, we also have a potential workroom and toilet room for the teachers, there's some storage space that we're better utilizing, and then we have a data and IT closet out here, so any questions on that?
We're also extending the PA system, clock system, et cetera, to match existing, and as well as maintaining consistency design approaches on the kindergartens for all the schools.
Correct.
This is scheduled to be complete 16th of, of September, so we're about, about six weeks away.
Right, so here we have a couple internal elevations of typical classroom casework, the cubbies down below, we have been getting feedback from the teachers to make sure that the classrooms are consistent amongst the different spaces, you know, we don't want to have one classroom significantly better than the other, so it's equity amongst teachers, and then we have the cubbies based on their feedback on what's working, so another thing that I have included here is roofing, and so one thing that we are considering is looking at different lead time, long lead time items, and if it makes sense, from the district's perspective, you know, with these times that we're in, we're evaluating different methods to be, make sure that our scope is protected as much as reasonable in these times, and we are also getting started on the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems design, the 50% is about when we get that kicked off. Any questions on South Mountain? Bob, did you have anything you wanted to say on Stetin before I get going?
No, but this is a distinct agenda item, so this one would be considered for action, we're ready to bid this out, or real close, so why don't you go ahead, Sharon?
Excellent, all right, so with that, again, we like to show the reference slide, which the community, the community is seen for your frame of reference, we've had more involvement, since this is a 95% design review, we're way in the details of finalizing coordination and things like that, so we had six design meetings, which also included the district leadership team and the building design committee, and one thing I wanted to point out is that by this time, we've had a principal walkthrough, and that included different members of the district staff, to walk the principal through the building on what's going to be changed inside and outside, so they fully understand, she fully understands, you know, the product that she's given, working through details, things like that, we've also had the three initial user group meetings, we haven't had any more, because now we're into the details of the project, so at this time, you've seen some color renderings for school forest and a few other projects, for the rest of these, the renderings come in at the 95%, so you can see that we've worked hard to match existing materials detailing, things like that, on the outside of the building, so it fits right in, there's some issues, or not issues, but just, you can see some minor changes based on what's going on, but there's a strong effort to make sure that it's all tied in together, we have a copy of the finished board that we sat and reviewed with district staff, and with the, you know, the principal to make sure that they were comfortable with the finishes and the materials that they have, and so you can see, the goal here was to match existing as much as reasonable, this is just an extension of the existing school, it's not like a whole new place that we're trying to create, so a lot of the carpeting, tiling, things like that matched, and where we couldn't get a good match, we actually found a neutral complement, to make sure that the, the interior spaces tied together pretty well, so this is pretty straightforward in these first round of schools, just because, again, we're trying to expand the existing scope, we're not rearranging, we're not starting over from scratch, so this is a, the updated site plan that we have, you can see the new additions in orange here, and again, you've seen a preliminary concept of this, but you can see some of the site work, the gray is a new ADA path to get down to this lower playground that is new, created from the displaced playground area from where the addition sits, so this is ADA accessible down to the bottom, and we replicated the games that we displaced from the addition, and we did give principal feedback on what was looking for, for a complimentary place, and so, one other minor thing that we're doing here too, is we are doing some concrete work up front to replace some damaged concrete, you know, maintenance, so at Stetin, we did this one in orange, you can see, this is the sixth classroom addition, there's only one addition on this site, we have the front office rework here, which is shown over here, and some of these other light orange areas are the ADA work that we're doing, we're adding grab bars, we're replacing cubbies, things like that, but I just wanted to show you that we're in and out throughout the school, we als, we also have two resource rooms, the two bathrooms, mechanical, IT, and a vestibule, so here's an enlarged plan, you can see on the key plan where we are in the building, so I went through this already pretty quickly, you can see the classrooms are all roughly the same size, the resource room goes out into the hallway, it's allowing for all six classrooms to utilize it, and it's also a more secure version of a resource room, so if there's any kind of issues, you know, the resource room is better set up for that, so here we have the front office, we added a couple new doors to help secure the office, we actually changed the positions of a few of them, just because it made more sense, and allowed for that secure space that we talked about before, and we're also adding cameras and hardware to help maintain that security in the front, and then, like I said earlier, at South Mountain, we're considering a roofing package to help expedite long lead time items, but we're still evaluating the market to see if that's actually the best idea for cost-effectiveness, and so here, again, you can see the cubbies and the casework, again, consistency and equity amongst the classrooms is really important, so, you know, we're creating those spaces, and we have a little bit more information on the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, where for the mechanical system, and real general overview, here is we have a new air handling unit serving the new addition, it's variable air volume for air distribution, and we're providing radiant hydronic heat, and then there's a condensing unit providing the cooling, for electrical, we're adding LED lighting and lighting controls, we're upgrading the power distribution, we're addressing some of the generator concerns, so we did end up locating the generator, relocating the generator, so it's more safe, the telecom systems, we're expanding the, the phone clocks, the, you know, speakers and all of that, the analog systems into the addition, the additions, and then we are upgrading the security systems to reflect the, the classroom addition, the new classroom addition and the front entry, and then we are replacing the entire fire alarm system, bringing it up to current codes, and also tying it back into the maintenance building, so there's remote notification, so with that, that's overview of what we're doing at Stetin as well, to keep you all aware of what we're doing, so are there any questions?
Since we're finalizing this with a motion, are there any questions at this point before we go to motion? Go ahead.
I have a question, this looks great, I love seeing how it, you know, is really just continuation of the building, and keeping it all consistent, my primary question is about the relocated playground, I know that, that, those new classrooms have covered up, you know, those games, and that's, are there basketball hoops that, like, it's hard for me to see what that is down there, that relocated playground?
Yeah, there's a couple basketball hoops that were moved down below, I think the ones we're looking at are sitting right about here, on the existing playground, so we're moving the pole, and that's what these locations are shown, and we are working with the principal. And we are working with the principal, like, if these are the ideal two locations, great, but we have a little bit of, actually, I'm sorry, these are the squares here. You can see, really, if you look hard, the backboard and the hoop. And so we just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the exact location, but this is something that we confirmed during construction, just to make sure, you know, get that final sign off before we're complete.
Sure. So with that, will that space be snowplowed?
We have talked about snow plowing quite a bit.
Like, was that previously plowed?
It was previously plowed.
And so is that access path and that area going to be plowed? The reason I ask these questions is because that's at the bottom of a really big sled hill for the kids and the neighborhood and everybody, and so I'm just wondering, is that going to end on a plowed space with basketball hoop, you know?
The reason I'm hesitating is it's part of a larger conversation. The cost of plowing and the cost of salting has gone up dramatically, and it wasn't even that many years ago where we didn't plow playgrounds, and then we moved to plowing them, and then we said, well, if we're going to plow them, let's salt them. And then when we salt them, we drag all the salt in the school, and we destroy this, you know, there's just this snowball effect. So we started a conversation this summer about, you know, maybe we need to regress a little bit in that regard. So the short answer to your question is unknown at this point.
Okay, that's what I was, I mean, I'm sure that you're thinking through all of those safety pieces, but yeah, just knowing that that tends to be the launch area. Yeah, so I'm just kind of wondering.
Makes it rough to stop.
Put some pads up.
Right. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Any other questions?
How do we like this format? This format of seeing 50% design, 95% design, take action on the 95. This is something we're comfortable doing, and it'll be just a cycle. We won't always see them twice because depending on if it's an ops meeting or a board meeting, we're going to have to time it right to keep these things rolling.
I can't speak for the board, but I'll say for myself, being, seeing it 50%, and then having the community see it at 50% gives them an opportunity to touch base with us. If we miss something, they then can ask us, and we can bring it back to you when we're at 95%. So there's a balance there, and there's a cross-check that I like.
Yeah, and I think that, I agree, and I think that will be more important for some of the other schools. Like Sharon said, this one's, these are sort of simple because they're just extensions. But when we start talking about moving things around, I think it'll be very good to do it this way with the other schools.
It's good to know. So I guess we had asked you to consider.
We'll move on to this. So I'm seeking a motion to approve planned designs for Stettin Elementary School as presented to be issued for bidding.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion moves.
Perfect. I'll point out that we plan to bid this the week of September 26.
First one? We're excited.
So do you want me to read this, or would you like to go right into it?
We talked a little bit about the road we're building at Hawthorne Hills, and the road that we're building, we hope the city to take over ownership eventually, and they've agreed to do that. But in doing that, they want us to sign a developer's agreement to make sure that we build it the way a city road would be built. We don't have the actual developer's agreement attached to the board book. We don't have it yet. We've talked about some samples that they've used with other developers. So at this time, Larry maybe can add a little bit more if you have it, but we would be asking you to give Dr. Hiltz the authority to sign such a developer's agreement when we see it, or we could bring the entire developer's agreement back to you. The motion is written, giving administration the authority to sign the developer's agreement. Anything more that I'm missing on that, Larry?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that from the city's perspective, this is a little bit of an anomaly because normally they would be working with a developer, not a school district. So they're taking a little bit of time writing that agreement. It's also important to note that they approve it at a staff level, so this doesn't go to CISA or City Council. This is approved on their end at a staff level. And it's really just to give them a level of comfort that we're not going to, you know, cheap out here at the end and make our sidewalks a little narrower or cut some corners, and then they're harnessed with a road that they have to maintain or fix or bring up to their standards at some point in the future.
Do we have any type of problem if we move forward and they come back and say, well, we need some other things that we would have to approve of?
I don't see that happening because honestly, we're working along with them, kind of step by step by step, and the engineers that are working on the projects are familiar with working on city streets. They've designed city streets before, so they're certainly well-versed in what the city requires as far as dimensions, construction methods, all those aspects that create a street.
That'd be the biggest question, yeah. But any other questions before we move forward with the motion? If not, I'm seeking a motion to authorize administration to finalize and sign the developer's agreement on behalf of the school board.
So moved.
Second. Questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Agenda item 10, no new business. We'll move to 11. Does anyone at the board here, board level, have anything to share in the realm of professional growth and development for this past month? This has been kind of vacation month, I think, for most of us, so if not, I'm just going to keep on moving.
Well, my husband and I and our kids, we attended the Mung Festival, so that was fun. Yeah, my son enjoyed it. Well, we all enjoyed it, but he enjoyed running around with kids.
And there were a lot of games to run around to.
Yeah, and watch the soccer tournaments and volleyball, food.
There you go.
I represented the district at the CISA annual meeting and was elected to another term representing the large schools on the CISA board for the next, for the near future.
Good. That's good to hear. Anything else? If not, Mr. Webster, any legislative updates?
Actually, I wish I could stay on top of what's happening on a federal level because it seems like there's all kinds of things that are coming down, and there's all kinds of legal actions that are going to be taking place. But at Wisconsin level, it really was interesting to me to find that Wisconsin Policy Forum found out that Wisconsin hasn't been keeping up with the growth in public education spending. In 2002, we were the 11th highest per pupil spending in the country, and now we are 25th, which is about 6% below the national average, which I found was very interesting because it does impact a lot of things that we do. Just a reminder that the member resolutions, if we were to want to present any resolutions for the annual meeting, they have to be in by September 15th. We've done this in the past. I don't know if anything that's happening here now or anyone has any interest, but it is a reminder. And then the final thing that I have is that, just a reminder, tomorrow is a partisan primary election for the state of Wisconsin. If you haven't voted already, please remember to do so. And I did get one question about Kevin Nicholson, who has withdrawn from the Republican race, and I think that may have had some impact with some of those that have voted early. So other than that, that's the update for today.
Thank you very much. Superintended comment?
Nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Nothing to add? I don't have anything to add. I'm just going to say I would like to identify the Lausanne District Activity Report and ask for that to be entered into the official record. And with that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So passed.